A lifesaver compared to the old.
And when you pull off the carpet, what's under there?
Um.
Oh, I know.
No.
Happy.
I can ask.
Thirty-five years ago. Yeah, yeah. I mean, we do carpet extracting.
Yeah.
Um, almost every vacation break plus the summer. So all the carpets that have now been replaced, they're clean.
I have a thing about carpet. We don't eat in any restaurants that have carpet.
Yeah.
That's a me thing.
That's funny. Carpet is tough.
No matter what you do to it, it's.
Yeah, it holds its.
It's whatever's on it or in it or under it.
So true.
Oh, God.
Everybody loves carpet.
I know people love carpet. I get it. I know people love carpet. But my family, whenever we go anywhere, it's, y'all can't go there. They have carpet.
That's funny.
We do have cookies tonight. This might be a good time to get a cookie break.
Pause for a cookie.
No, I'm good.
Good for you.
I have another one.
I have small signs.
Terry, we're back.
Okay, we're still on cookie pause. Just a second. Terry, do you know pause? Oh, Alyssa.
Yes. I had a text from Andrea and an email from Manny, so I'm not sure. Okay, okay. Thank you.
We cut trees. Because that was the problem.
Hi, Quincy.
Quincy. And friends.
You guys got back.
Nice to see you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm glad we're having a little break because our filming had a little glitch. A little pick bubble. Awesome. Thank you. I really appreciate that.
What's the funnest thing you've done?
Oh, you did sport camp?
I did sport camp.
So that was my daughter that was helping, Victoria. Do you need her?
She's wonderful. Awesome. She's an energetic, wonderful person. Come back. Come back often. We are back up and running. Okay.
Are you ready?
Back up and running. Quincy will see you. Right, we'll be chatting.
Bye.
That worked out well.
Okay. We will be get back on track here. We are, um, do we need two more?
I think I'm pretty much done. Unless anybody has questions.
Oh, I asked off camera, so, yeah.
Thank you to you and all the staff for doing all those.
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
You always do miracles with small resources and we really are grateful. Annual approval of a school physician.
Yes.
Guarder Family Medicine.
Every year, uh, you all approve our school physician with Garder Family Medicine is Abigail Hook. Love her.
Motion to approve school physician.
Second.
Second from Megan. Questions or comments? All those in favor? Excellent. Annual approval of the truancy officers.
Yeah, truancy officers are actually listed as attendance coordinators in our policy, and I believe it's one we might look at this year. Um, these are the school principals and they are ultimately responsible for addressing any chronic absenteeism and anything that rises beyond chronic absenteeism to truancy. And those people are listed Lauren Arnold, Sarah Sims, Victoria Dugay, Christina Levine, who is our new principal at LER, Sharif Cool at Helen Thompson, and Elizabeth Drole at Pittston Randolph Consolidated.
Excellent.
Do you need a motion for that?
We do need to.
Okay, motion. Motion to approve, second by Molly. Any questions, comments, all those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, Michelle.
Oh, if you have a question.
Thank you. Thank you.
Need to get a little quicker.
Old business, none. Board chair, uh, main school management. Um, we have our fall conference in October. We need, um, a delegate for the delegate assembly. Um, it's an online virtual opportunity. We're looking for somebody that will.
So the, the delegate assembly, um, during the year, there are, um, resolutions that are created. That hopefully become long, you know, next level. And we need every, every, um, school board has a representative that serves. I think Joanne, did you do it last year?
I did it last year.
You interested in doing it again this year?
No.
That's fair.
She thought about it for a while.
It was just too exciting. Yes, Michelle.
What, when is the time commitment on that?
It's a, it's a couple hours on, um, a
monthly basis.
Well, the, the, um, resolutions are completed. Um, we had a meeting two nights ago, so the resolutions are completed. The resolutions booklet will be coming out soon. The commitment is, um, that the resolutions will come here to, to whomever decides to do it. And you'll read through them. We can discuss them. We will set a time aside at one or two board meetings to discuss resolutions that may or may not, um, your job would be to go to the resolutions, the delegate assembly, and represent the board's wishes for these resolutions. Yes.
I think we received the email today with all the attachments.
Oh, great. Okay. So it's out now. Yeah. So is there anyone here who would like to? Me too. We can consider it and we can come back to it next month. Don't want to twist anybody's arm, so give it some thought. Board members, look at the resolutions.
Yeah.
Since we've got them and, uh, familiarize yourself with them. And we'll come back to it next month. Uh, and it's, let's see, main school board, uh, regional, we have regional meetings. The next one is September 11th at 6:00 PM. It's an opportunity to visit with other school board members virtually. I encourage you all to participate as, as you are able. Main School Board Assembly on October 18th. That's delegate assembly. That's on, uh, that's the 18th October, uh, Saturday, October 18th, beginning at 9:30, and it lasts like only a couple of hours, three hours probably at the most. And then, um, we would like to consider holding a uh, board training or a tour of our school facilities. We haven't done that in a while. So a Saturday perhaps to do that.
We did it in 2024. I was just on the board when we went to.
Got locked up.
Oh, yeah. Oh, got locked up.
Oh, okay.
Locked in, locked out.
Oh, dear.
So if there's, yes, Jeff.
Yeah, I, I would like to see all the facilities, tour of the facilities. You, you offered that a year ago, but I was unable to attend that. It's a great thing to do with them to do it.
It's a great thing to do. Um, we gather on a school bus and we go around all together. And if we're lucky, somebody brings coffee and donuts. If we're not lucky, we still get to go do it. So, but I think it's a wonderful idea.
Just be careful when you stop to use the bathroom.
Right. Get locked in. But I think it's a great idea.
People move on.
So we will come back, um, next month with some dates to choose.
Would this be?
Sorry.
Would this be on weekends?
Yes, we do it on a Saturday when there's no students in the building. Yes. Superintendent's report.
Yes, I have a few things. Um, I did send an email regarding the update on the status of the school construction ranking for our schools. If you recall, we submitted, uh, infrastructure and facilities is one core element of our strategic plan. We submitted new construction applications to the Department of Education. It was a recommendation that we submit all applications for all buildings, even though we recognize that we have some we would let, we would want to get to sooner. Um, you probably recall that our, uh, rate, how our ratings came in, there were 95 schools listed. I didn't share at the time because we hadn't received our reports from the department. Uh, I had just seen the meeting and the list of the school rankings. But the ratings were determined on a very, this is a very light touch understanding of the process. Um, but priority, there were three priority areas that the ratings were determined by, or the rankings were determined by. Uh, building and grounds, school population, and program and planning. So building and grounds speaks for itself, right? The state of your buildings. School population, um, is factors and number of students and square footage in the building. And then program and planning is about what, uh, specific programs you have in each building. And just as a reminder, uh, Pittston Randolph Consolidated School came in 16th on the list. Our middle school was 47. Our high school was the 73rd school. Helen Thompson was 87, Riverview 90, and LER 91. There is an appeals process to, um, the department. It's a 30 to 60 day timeline for that appeal process. It's not my intention to appeal. Um, and the final priority list will be publicized in October. Questions about that?
Questions?
So I guess part of what I'm hearing a little bit as far as how some of the evaluation goes from the state, we'd sort of have to have what, like Pittston Randolph, uh, Community School came up higher on the list. It's sort of like all the buildings need to be in the same state at once in order to qualify for one reconstruction.
Yeah, we would need to really think through how we maximize an opportunity for a new school if Pittston Randolph comes up as the next, um, group of buildings to be considered. Does that make?
Yeah.
Does that answer your question?
It would.
Are you saying that if we just put in Pittston Randolph, we might have been higher, that the others brought us down?
I, I'm not certain that would have changed the ranking, Linda, but to be honest, I'm not entirely sure how that would have changed. Gabe, feel free to, if you have more insight, feel free to come to the podium. I don't mean to put you on the spot because I think we know just about the same
Yeah.
uh, information, but you're welcome to.
Yeah, I mean, I, I can talk a little bit to it. Um, as far as the question about Pittston, if we would have only put that, out of all the schools, Pittston's the only one that was already, had been reviewed in the past um, for the district. That's the only one. Um, and I think back then, 10 or so years ago, we were 38, 39 on the list. So we haven't, obviously.
No, we're coming.
We haven't done, um, but still, we're not, um, we're not the top 10.
Right.
Um, and I know there was an article in the paper. Um, I, I haven't read it, but
Yeah.
it did talk to restructuring, trying to figure out how, um, they fund new construction for schools. Um, there are, somebody's mentioned there's about 500 that need to be, um, replaced in the next two decades. So, um, with only doing seven to eight every 10 years right now. We have to, we have to.
Decline a moment.
How, right. Uh, how we fund the renovate, either renovating or, or new construction. Um, and really, I think we're all going to have to look at what is the next step moving forward since we are only, you know, our worst school is 16th on, uh, 16th on the list. And high school, the middle school ranked worse than the high school, which
Which doesn't even make sense.
Dude, I think looking at it, doing the walkthrough with, with the group, um, you know, we're I don't know, there, there were quite a few concerns that they had at the middle school. Um, some of it is the high school is very large. We have a lot of open space. Um, and so they look at that. Um, they're, we're not cramped and packed in there.
Right.
Um, where we are a little more cramped at the middle school. So that's, um, I think part of why it ranks, um, higher up on the list than high school. Yeah, we'll definitely have to figure out what the next step is.
Yeah, so it's the second thing that you said was something about what programs that you have. Is that?
Yeah, program and planning.
So programs and planning, those are budgeting issues. How far do we have to?
Here, here's a list of, um, specifics in the program and planning category.
Okay.
Career preparation and guidance, English language arts, health and PE, mathematics, world languages, science, technology and distance learning, social studies, visual and performing arts, library media, special education, gifted and talented, alternative ed, early childhood. And so there's a, there's a point system if you have those programs in the building.
And we do.
And we do. Again, I can't speak to this the specifics around what earns what ranking, but
Gotcha.
That's what we have there. Are there any other questions about?
Most amazed, I mean, given the age of our high school and all the work that you do just to kind of keep it together, um, between leaks and flooding and HVAC systems and
Squishy tiles.
That we were 73rd? Oh, my God.
Well.
Yeah.
We are good stewards of our properties and we take really good care of what we have. So, yes, Molly.
At what point do we consider just creating a subcommittee to just explore what next steps are so that we're not three months into them thinking, should we have full conversation about this? I'm not suggesting that we create a plan, but I'm wondering, is there a reason to have a committee start considering what our regulated options? I mean, we've received the results now. We've, we've passed, uh, engineering firm. We held off on proceeding with those funds until we were waiting for this. So it's just, there's so many things that we've kind of pressed pause. So will it just be on our regular agenda or should we have group look at it?
I think it's a valid question that you all have to decide if it's, if it's time for that.
To really explore options.
Great.
Please, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Do we still owe more on what we received? They were pretty detailed. We only paid like a portion of that, right? Don't we still owe whoever did the reports for us for each building? I feel like we owe them more money. Do you know that answer? I don't know.
Thank you, Gabe. You're so good.
Say, where's Andrea?
So, so all the engineering reports were, were up to where we need to be for the school construction applications. That's, that's all paid and that permanent work is done. Um, there, there was some additional engineering that we were doing for the high school. That work is done, that we, we do need to pay, um, EMC for the work they did on that, that portion of it. Um, and as far as moving forward with, because right, you're right, Molly, we put on hold the work for EMC, the lighting upgrades and all of those pieces of it.
Yeah.
So, um, that's, again, you know, finance committee, we can discuss, you know, and, and see where we move forward, um, with that.
Andrea just said they were paid.
Yeah. I figured she was probably watching over.
She's watching.
So we know what she is doing.
Of course she is. Thank you, Gabe.
Yep, yep.
Thank you. God, I remembered that we paid.
Yeah, but that's a good question. Make sure we're
No, because the reports are very valuable. So why not keep the momentum to your point?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Excellent. You have questions, thoughts?
Okay. Update on the school-based health clinic. On July 22nd, I met with Deandra and Connie. They were the two representatives from Health Reach who joined us in the boardroom on more than one occasion. And, uh, the next steps are to schedule walk, regular walkthroughs, uh, between Health Reach and Gabe and myself. Uh, and that is in preparation of the space for the clinic at the high school. In addition, um, I will be creating a you all need to create, don't we? A, uh, an advisory committee for the school-based health clinic, a group that will guide, ask the questions, provide feedback, and establish, um, parameters around how our health clinic will run. Um, hang on just a second. Let me find my notes.
Will you be doing that tonight?
We will not be doing that tonight, but that will be a next step. Gabe has been in contact to start to schedule the walkthroughs. Um,
Will they be during the evening, weekends, daytime?
We'll have to decide that, but we'll want, it's my belief that we will want, uh, vast representation. Uh, community members that include parents, staff, certainly nurse representation, board representation. And so we'll need to determine a meeting time that will work for the group. Um, I believe that it would be an appointment for someone from the board to be on a committee. That's your territory more than mine, but as far as next steps and where we stand with the health clinic, that is what comes next. Regular walkthroughs and an advisory committee that will need to be formed and, um, I am meeting with our high school nurse next Monday, uh, and this is one of the items on the list to discuss with her. So I would expect to be able to provide you with an, at least an update next month, if not, um, the, uh, the plan for the, for the, uh, advisory committee as far as the membership. Are there any questions about that? Okay. Um, special education audit findings. So again, I will invite Sarah to the podium. It's such a celebration for us. So there's a lot that goes on in the world of special education that it can be challenging to understand within the big picture of our responsibility to educate all students. Uh, they are bound to stringent regulations around paperwork and law. And it is challenging to keep up with all of those demands and attention to detail on top of, um, teaching students every day, teaching students with complex learning needs every day. It was part of the reason for the, um, addition of the inclusion specialists. We had been, uh, at a, do you want us to have the opportunity to share like the great news? Because I just want to get to like, we're celebrating. But Sarah, can you describe a little bit about the audit process and share the great news?
So before I was director, there should have been a similar sharing with the board. I wouldn't have been, because I was the assistant director. But, um, we had an audit, um, right before I became director, um, where the district was placed at tier four. Tier four is the tier that needs the most support from the state. Um, it's not the tier we want to be at as a district. Um, it requires quarterly visits from the Department of Ed. It requires a series of trainings that we have to participate in over a two-year cycle. Um, it wasn't where we wanted to be. Um, we set a goal two years ago to move from tier four to tier two. Um, and we took a series of actions in hopes to meet that goal, um, because we wanted our paperwork, um, to reflect compliance. And we wanted our IEPs to reflect student needs and monitor student growth and all of those amazing things. Um, so Chrissy Ferrera, I need to give her a huge amount of credit here. She really led the charge with getting our, um, paperwork and our work with regard to IEP meetings to where it needs to be. Um, so she worked with our inclusion specialists and our special educators over the last year um, to continue to make growth from the year before. Um, and when the state came to audit us this spring, um, they don't tell you how you do right in the moment, so we had to wait for the good news. At the end of June, I think June 30th, maybe, they sent us an email, let us know that we were a tier one.
Oh, yes.
Very exciting. Is that means we're now audited every six years, just a little. And next audit is in six years instead of every two years.
That is awesome.
Tremendous celebration and a great credit to the team.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
That's what inclusion specialists do.
So over the next six years, Sarah, is it accurate to say that there will be internal mechanisms for, uh, internal audit to make sure that we are keeping pace with this, with the expectation that we remain at tier one?
There is a requirement from the state that we'll absolutely be meeting that every year, each person that does paperwork has to compare their paperwork against the audit tool, um, and reflect on how they're doing and self-audit.
Right.
Maybe audit in conjunction with Chrissy or an inclusion specialist to make sure that we're continuing on the path that we're on.
Great. That's awesome.
I would like to just kind of like pull the curtain back a little and say, um, being compliant in all of the ways that special education requires. Uh, again, it comes down to attention to detail and consistent feedback that can be challenging to give and challenging to receive. It can feel nitpicky and, um, that's challenging. And the audit process and results is so, it's so far removed from the classroom that that can just feel tough for staff. And so again, kudos for doing the hard work and seeing the results is just beyond exciting. So, thank you. To you, Sarah, and Chrissy, and the whole team.
Please tell them how excited we are. This is such.
I just pressed my excitement via email. I keep having to see people in person.
Excellent.
Thank you. Um, administrative teamwork, um, administrative team workshop. I'm going to keep this a little more brief than I had planned because it's, you know, getting to be that time. Uh, so we just spent two days together as an administrative team in this room, getting to know each other, establishing working agreements, talking about, uh, structure for instructional leadership, setting goals for student progress and achievement, going through the nuts and bolts and logistics of the school year. We had a ton of positive energy and momentum. It's really exciting how our team is coming together and, um, we've reviewed emergency management procedures, policies, and, um, we have a really dynamic team. I'm excited for next month because they will be here and you'll have a chance to, uh, hear from some of them and just get to know them a bit. Uh, but we had a great, a great couple of days. And speaking from the building leader perspective, you know, you have these days and it's great to come together and you get the big picture and and how this will look at all levels. And then you're so ready to get back to the school because there's so much to do in the school itself. And so, uh, we do try to balance that, but it's great to be all together after, uh, for many, a few weeks of vacation. Everybody comes back like ready to go.
That's awesome.
Um, staff vacancies, like I said, we have quite a few. I will just quickly go down through the list. We are actively looking and interviewing and, um, reposting positions. We have the OT position, maybe some positive movement as of this, earlier this afternoon. Um, at the high school, we are still in need of a math teacher, special educator, uh, with a math focus, special educator with a literacy focus, and ed tech two in our behavior program at the high school, and ed tech one in our life skills program at the high school, and a second shift custodian. We actually have two open positions. Please help spread the word. At our middle school, we have an open special educator, uh, with a focus on literacy and a math teacher. This is an anticipated opening, um, in grade eight math. At Helen Thompson, we have our special education teacher in the steps program open, and we, uh, are still looking for a school social worker at Helen Thompson. At LER, we're looking for a school nutrition worker. And at Pittston Randolph Consolidated, we are in need of a special educator for the resource room and a school social worker. There, some of these positions, we have interviews lined up or have happened, but they're still current vacancies and so we're working hard. Again, it's that time. We start feeling ready. We, we're posting supply lists. We're getting calls in the office. Elementary, um, admin assistants return to the buildings next week. So we are, we are looking to fill these positions as soon as possible. And uh, the commissioners conference. So I had the opportunity, many of you I saw during our special board meetings at the end of June, and I was able to share a little bit, uh, bits and pieces about the construction information at that time. Um, Pat actually gave her slot to me to be able to attend the commissioners conference at the end of June. So, um, I'm grateful for that. It was a great opportunity to, um, connect with other superintendents from around the state in a beautiful setting of Bar Harbor. And, um, I was able to attend several sessions. I just wanted to share with you what I attended. This is sort of like what's going on in the world of superintendencies I learned. Um, Here were the sessions, day of A I and strategic leadership for A I and emerging technologies in school. Kind of an interesting takeaway was. A quote, A I won't replace humans, humans will, with A I will replace humans without A I. I hadn't heard that. So A I being artificial intelligence. There was a real focus on not being. Pro A I ban, instead really thinking about how you create prompts in a way to maximize what the tool of A I can do for you. So fascinating and relevant information. I attended the superintendent's role in managing threats, misinformation and community trust. One. Eye-opening tidbit there was, was that, you know, we're inundated with school violence stories. There were one, there are one hundred thirty. News stories a day about school violence. Certainly in our roles, we pay attention to that. We see that, we feel that. We went through tools for behavioral threat assessment, partnering with law enforcement. I attended managing the media in a P R crisis, communication strategies for superintendents. I attended federal statutes, state laws and executive orders and an update on school construction in the state of Maine. So fascinating content, really important opportunity to network. And relevant information that I've referred to over and over again over these last few weeks. Any questions about that? And the last thing that I have is a school board member survey. So. It is my hope to have a chance to be able to sit down and talk to all of you. I have to say in hindsight, I'm glad I didn't schedule anything because the month of July is very, very busy here. For all the years that I've heard that, I have lived it now and wow, it's a busy, busy time. So I have created a seven-question survey. It's easy, like it'll take five minutes or less of your time. Because some are just like click the box sort of questions, you know, respond with a click of a box. So I will be sending that survey out to you within the coming days, but I would love for you to just be honest, it's anonymous, just looking for. Information from you. Awesome. That's all I've got.
Can I, can I go in just real quick? We missed the very end of Angela's request, so right before the vote and both of Sarah's requests on the data.
Okay. Um, we're, we'll think this through for a moment. And Molly, did you have a question?
I just, when you were going off the vacancies, I just wondered, where are we at with bus drivers? And you don't have to know right this moment, but.
I believe, we, I actually had a conversation with Andrea about bus drivers today. I believe we might need one position. I mean, we don't have any listed and they would be included and there have been a few bumps in the road with certification and needs, so I. I'm sorry, I can't give you a precise answer, but we are.
Just it's not an immediate need, perhaps we're like coming off last. Bus routes.
I, I feel, I think we're going to need a driver.
Okay.
But I, I will follow up with accurate information and apologize for not having that for you.
There was one that was just posted.
Yeah, like today.
We need to.
We need to.
Friend phoning.
We have Andrea.
What would you propose?
At least, she says.
Just about you.
Can you perform your? Just say, we just say the request.
Yes, can you?
Let us know your request over again.
Sorry.
So phone request, Jared, I need to do. I didn't see you at all.
Okay. Wow.
Oh, oh, awful.
So this is consideration to approve changing the unfilled code of position to an occupational therapy position.
So sort of just the request or the whole spiel? Does our meeting have to be published? Like, does it have to be publicized?
No.
Just a courtesy that we do.
Approve again with a raise of hands.
That's what I'd say. No, we don't have to stream. No.
Because the minutes will show, sorry. The minutes will show that we did that.
Correct.
Right.
Okay, so the sequence of the. Consideration. The motion, the second and the vote will all be reflected in minutes.
Yes.
Because our video cut out for a little bit. Okay, but thanks for being willing to do that again, Sarah.
Do whatever you'd like.
All right then. I believe we are adjourned.
We got.
No executive session. Don't get used to it.